Just to have you all give a welcome to Dr. Martin.
First of all, it's a real pleasure for me to be here with you tonight and I don't know where to stand. Unlike most political candidates, when you run a bond election, there are some rules that school districts have to follow because we are funded with taxpayer dollars. So I can't come up here and be a cheerleader for this bond, okay? My goal here tonight is just simply to educate you about the bond. So that you know exactly what we want to do with the money, how it will impact you as a taxpayer. And I'm happy to answer as many questions as you have when I'm done with the presentation. I do have quite a few slides I want to show you just so you can get an idea of exactly what this bond entails. And then we can get into any of the questions that you may have. I do have, there are, as you saw earlier, a lot of people who were part of the steering committee or the action teams here with us tonight and, you know, they may be able to answer some of the questions that I may not can answer. But I want to talk to you about the bond real quick. First of all, how did we get to this point? I'll tell people, this was not my grand scheme that I dreamed up in my office one day. This came about through a year-long process. And we started off shortly after I arrived with a survey that we sent out to every community member. We put it in the paper, it was on websites. We had about 2,000 people respond to that survey. And from there, we went into what we call strategic design or strategic planning process, where we had about 35 members of our community and our staff come together and discuss the issues. And certainly not only about facilities. We talked about community resources and we talked about curriculum. And we talked about how we can make schools better. But obviously, facilities was one of those areas that got a lot of attention. So through our strategic design plan, we had an action team that specifically delved into our facilities. They took tours, they looked at our buildings, they looked at what we needed. And they made recommendations to our school board. Then we had a bond steering committee. We had a 20-person, this was a different group of folks that we ran this through. Had a 20-person committee. Seventeen of those were not G.I.S.D. employees, okay? They were community members, they were business leaders, they were parents. They were not connected to our school in any way other than being a parent. So this group of 20 made the final presentation to our school board. And I will tell you that out of our action team, we actually had a laundry list or a Christmas list, if you will, of about $112 million worth of projects that we looked at. When this 20-person team looked at these proposals, they were able to ask some questions and whittle down some things. And they came to a number of $84.9 million that they presented to our school board. And our school board agreed to move forward with the bond election. So that's how we got to where we are today. So what is a bond election? A bond election is simply this. It allows our citizens to decide, after you see what we're proposing, is this what we want our tax dollars going for? I mean, it's simply that. I've told people this before. Eighty-five million dollars, eighty-four point nine million dollars. Our operating budget at our schools is about $54 million a year. It is impossible for us to generate $84 million. You know, people say, why don't you just save your money? Well, we could eliminate band and football and fire teachers and shut down schools and not run buses and do all of those kind of things to try to save money. We could never save $85 million. It's just simply impossible. So you have to look at a bond election as a mortgage, you know? Most people don't save money until they have enough money to buy their home. I don't know many people that can do that. So we all take mortgages on our homes that we buy, or most of us do. So think of this bond election as a mortgage. It's a mortgage on facilities for our schools. So look at it that way. But it's simply a bond election allows our citizens to decide, this is where our money should be spent or it shouldn't be spent. And we are certainly going to respect the decision of our voters. So I want to give you tax rate 101 real quick, real quick tax lesson. This is on school taxes. Right now, you have a dollar and fourteen and a half cents in school taxes. That's what you pay now. Of that, it's made up of two different pieces. The first piece is called the M and O. We just call it the M and O, maintenance and operations. This is what we use, this part of the tax is what we use to pay salaries with, pay for supplies, pay our utility bills. This is our monthly checkbook, if you will. The key to this is, out of that dollar four, every dollar that we raise through that dollar four, we send 20% of it back to the state of Texas, okay? We are what's considered a property wealthy school district. Doesn't mean our kids are wealthy. It means we have a lot of property value in our school district, more so than most school districts in the state. So because of that, we're a Robin Hood district or a recaptured district or a chapter 41. All of it means the same thing. You've heard those terms. But we send about 20% of our tax revenue back to the state so it can be dispersed to other schools around the state. The second part of the tax is called the INS, interest and sinking. And right now, it's 10 and a half cents, okay? We have a 10 and a half cent INS rate. The key to this rate, and this is where the bond election taxes would come from. Just trust me, that's 10 and a half cents. So of this 10 and a half cents, the key to the bond election is that 100% of the dollars raised on the INS side of the tax stay in Granbury. Those dollars are not recaptured, they're not sent back to the state. That is a key for this bond election. That's a key for Granbury and that's what makes it a little bit unique for our school. Because these are dollars that are actually staying in our town. So how can the funds be used? Bond issued taxes, monies raised through a bond election can only be used to pay off the debt. They can't be used to give salary raises, they can't be used to pay electric bills, they can't be used to buy anything, supplies or anything like that. They can only be used to pay off your debt. So here's how the bond election is lined up. Proposition one is $81.9 million. 62.2 million is going to renovate, and I'm using the word transform, transformate, or do a transformation of Granbury High School. We'll show you some details in a minute. 4.3 million to safety and security upgrades at all of our campuses. 10.8 million in technology upgrades. Four and a half million in other district-wide improvements and investments. And we'll talk about those as well. Proposition two is $3 million. And this is, this is a little bit complicated, but it's just a, to be perfectly honest with our voters, this is a tax swap. We are taking dollars that we are, we're paying for upgrades we did in HVAC and lighting over the summer. And we're paying for those dollars, those out of the M and O side of our tax rate. We are, we are doing a tax swap and moving this debt over to the INS side. It's beneficial to our district to do that. The INS side again is the, is the side where we don't send money back to the state. So let's talk about Granbury High School real quick. The first part of this process is to move our ninth graders back to GHS. Currently, we have Crossland Ninth Grade Center, which was originally built, I think, as an intermediate school. It's about a mile or mile and a half from our high school. And our ninth graders are housed in that building. Right now, about 72% of those kids are being bused every day to the high school. They're bused over there for athletics, they're bused for career and tech courses, they're bused for fine arts. So 72% of those kids are already going to the high school at some point in their day. And they're spending about 20 minutes a day on a bus instead of in a classroom. So the first piece of this is to move our ninth graders to the high school. The second piece of this is to add about 20,000 square feet to the rear of our building and construct a new career and tech center. Career and tech, some of you remember it being called vocational. It's more like vocational on steroids, okay? Because it's not shop class, it's not building a birdhouse. I mean, we're talking about engineering courses, we're talking about health sciences, we're talking about audiovisual production, computer classes. So these are, these are classes that do prepare kids for college, prepare them for jobs after high school, prepare them to go into certification programs. And we even give out some licenses and certifications to kids in these programs. So this is an important part of our school. The other, there's also a piece of this that would expand our fine arts areas and renovate those areas for those fast-growth programs that we have in band, choir, theater, and art. And then we're going to reconfigure the inside of the classroom. And I'll show you some slides about that. Just a fact for you, GHS was built 40 years ago. It has not been renovated in over 20 years. So this is a aging building. Structurally, it's in good shape. That's why we're not necessarily proposing a new school. I will tell you that we did look at, one of our options was to build a new high school. And we looked at the price to build a new high school the same size as the one we have now and do some things different with junior highs. And the cost, just to replicate what we have right now, was $110 million. So if we build a new school that costs $110 million for $62 million, we think we're getting a new school and we're bringing the ninth graders over. So we think that was a great cost savings for us. We believe, and architects believe, that renovating this building will extend the life for another 50 years. So this takes care of us for a very long time. We talked about the ninth grade situation. Just another factual information for you. In our current school year, we have about 1,400 students taking at least one career and tech class. And we have about 1,000 students taking at least one fine arts class. So these are very popular programs and they touch a lot of kids. Here's our existing high school, just to orient you. This is Bridge Street, the airport is over here. This is our auditorium. This is the front of the high school. This is the James One, so just to orient you. The red here is our existing administration offices. Back in the 60s and 70s when they designed schools, they put the administration in the middle of buildings. It was a common architectural way of doing things. We didn't worry about intruders and people coming on our campuses with weapons back in those days. So that was certainly effective back then. It's not so much anymore. The purple areas are existing career and tech courses. These are honestly, these were just areas that somebody said, we need to teach audiovisual. Where here's a, here's a good space to teach that course, let's put it right here. And that's kind of what they've done. That's why those purple are just scattered throughout the building. So what we're proposing is this. We're going to add a wing to the front of the high school that would become the new administration area. This does several things for us. The number one thing is it makes our visitors come through the office area first, go through a series of checkpoints before they have access to the rest of the building. The second part of this program would be moving all of our career and tech to the rear of the building, adding about 20,000 square feet of space and making this a complete career and tech center. We would also have a new entry to our high school at the rear of the building. So if you, if kids were coming just to the career and tech center or kids from other schools wanted to take a course here or if we wanted to have night classes for adults, they could enter the building through the career and tech center and not have to get into the rest of our building. So we think there's a lot of benefits to doing that. The second part of this is adding the ninth grade wing onto the high school. This would be a two-story building and we would wrap it on top of the administration building. This does a few things for us as well. It lets us keep our ninth graders separate from the rest of the high schoolers, which we think is important as they transition into high school. So if we could, they could take their core courses in this wing and they could still have easy access to fine arts, to career and tech, and obviously to athletics. So we think we get the same benefits that we have now where they're still separate, but we keep them off of the bus for 20 minutes a day and they're, they get to take advantage of the new facilities. The other part of this is adding some space to our fine arts programs. And what you, what you have to do in this fine arts area and really throughout the whole building is, you have to just picture this without the internal walls. Because where the choir room is now may not be where the choir room is when we're done. And where the band hall is now may not be where it is when we're done. So we're essentially taking down the walls and starting over. One of the areas here is adding a set building area for our theater arts. Currently, and I'm not a huge theater person, but some of you are and you'll understand and appreciate this more than I will. But we build our sets in this room right here. In order to get them on the stage, we have to take our sets down, walk them down this hallway and then access the stage and rebuild our sets. And people who do that are not very happy about that. So one of the things we're going to do is add a set building area here where the equipment and sets can go directly onto the stage and off without having to take it down. And then the rest of the building would get a complete renovation. All of this, if you've been in our high school, you know that this area especially is like a maze. You can get lost very easily. So again, picture all of this area without the walls. And we want to create some long, straight hallways here, much more manageable for our staff, much easier for our kids, much easier to supervise and a much more efficient use of space. Now, when I say renovate to people and they say $62 million, most people say, how in the world are you going to spend $62 million on a high school just by renovating it? All you're going to do is paint the walls and put new carpet down. That's not what we're talking about. And I want to show you a couple of projects. This was Brownwood High School about five years ago. And the reason I show these pictures, the same architect group that did these programs are the ones that are working with us. Huckabee Architects, they were originally out of Stevensville, they're now in Fort Worth. But they do a lot of schoolwork. This was Brownwood High School about five years ago. This is the same picture of Brownwood High School today. This was a commons area in the school. This is what it looks like today. This was a hallway. This is it today. This was a library. This is it today. This was their auditorium. This is it today. Typical classroom. And today, another outside building. And this is it today. If you walk around the exterior of our high school right now, you can tell that, you can tell when things were added because some years they used stone and some years they used metal and some years they used bricks and some years they used blocks. And so part of this project will be to make this building look like it was all built at the same time and make everything uniform inside and out. This is Georgetown High School, a similar project. This is the view of Georgetown High School two years ago. And they actually opened this building this year, so it's brand new. That's what Georgetown High School looks like today. That's a rendering, that's not an actual drawing. This is an actual construction picture here. But you can tell, they're just changing the entire look of the building. On the inside, they took some spaces, they used some native stone, created some more efficient spaces and made it a much more inviting place for kids. This was a cafeteria. This is it today. And this is just a top and bottom, kind of to show you the difference in the exterior of the building. Career and tech spaces, just some examples here again. This is actually our current auto tech shop. We have one lift. This is what a auto tech shop should probably look like. This is our health science classroom. And this is really a little deceiving because this is more like a closet. It's a really small space with two beds in it. This is what a health science classroom should probably look like. Where you can actually create an ICU or a situation like that where kids walk into this classroom, they know what they're there to learn about. This is our existing media classroom. And one of the things we can do with this space is create TV studios and green screens and produce TV shows. We've got a really good relationship with Granbury TV. They are asking us for content constantly. And this would be a great avenue for our kids to get their work on the television. This is existing welding and this is what a new welding shop may look like. The difference here is the individual bays for the kids to work in and weld in. They've got exhaust in each bay and just a, just a much more efficient and safer use of that space. This is food lab. Some of you remember it being called Home Eck. I tell people this and sometimes they don't know what I'm talking about. But back when this building was built, I'm guessing somebody was a Houston Oilers fan because they got the lovey-ha blue going on. That is actually still our food lab, that's what it looks like today. And you can see it's just got basically some home type ovens and stoves in the, in the building. This is what a food lab should probably look like and it's more called culinary arts now. This is, I believe, Colleen ISD. And this space here is, is a restaurant. This was taken before the building opened, so they don't have any rest, any signs or anything. But this is a restaurant. These kids prepare lunch a couple of days a week or their community members can come in and eat lunch with the kids. And the kids learn not only how to prepare the food, but they also learn the business side of this. How much does it cost to make the meal? What do we need to charge to get our profit back? So they get not only the culinary arts part of it, they get the business side of this as well. And this is what the actual kitchen would look like. So you go from that to that, there's quite a difference in what you can offer in those two settings. Principles of law, again, debate classes, government classes, teen court could be here. You know, you're just creating spaces that are more specific to the classes that you're teaching. Safety and security upgrades. I'm going to just show you a couple of examples of what we're, what we're doing. I've got every campus on here, so if somebody wants to see a particular campus, I'll be glad to show it to you. But I'm just going to show you what we've got now in this. I'm going to try to find a picture that is better. This is Acton Elementary. And right now, we have what you call a buzz-in system. So when you walk up to our doors, we've got a camera on you and you push a button and the secretary sees you on the camera and she decides if you look, you know, honest and safe. And if you do, she pushes a button, it unlocks the doors. But once you come in these doors, you have what we call 20 seconds of trust. We are trusting that once you walk in these two doors, you're going to come down the hallway, walk into our office and talk to the receptionist, tell her why you're there, who you need to see, et cetera. We're also trusting that you're not going to take off running down the hall where our kids and our staff are working. So this is a real simple concept is, we're just putting in a second set of doors. We still have our buzz-in system here. But once you get in, you have to go in through this door, talk to a receptionist and all this area will be locked down. So you'd have to talk to somebody before these doors would be open and give you access. So it's, it's just creating really a second layer of security on all of our campuses. And every campus has a different version of that. I'll show you, both of our intermediate, both of our middle schools are basically the same building. And the only thing different here, this is Acton Middle School. We already have the two sets of doors here, but for some reason, once you come in these two doors, you walk all the way down the hall to get to the office where you check in. So in this case, we're just swapping spaces. So now we're going to make this the receptionist area. So when you walk in the front doors, you have to go into the office before you have access through the second set of doors. And that's essentially what we're doing at all of our campuses. Technology upgrades, $10.8 million. That's a lot of money. The bad part about this is, a lot of this money you will never see because it's up in the ceiling and it's infrastructure and it's switches and it's fiber and it's network operating equipment that gives us the speed. We want to have 8,000 people, think about it. We've got almost 7,000 kids and 1,000 employees. We need 8,000 people to be able to access internet at one time. If you've ever had dial-up internet or some of the slow satellite internet where you try to go to a website and it starts buffering and just sits there and spins for a few minutes, that's what we have now. When our teachers do a great job preparing lessons, they get this wonderful lesson that they need internet access to go on a virtual field trip or whatever it is they're doing. And then they get to class and they can't access the site that they need. So a lot of this money is going to beef up our infrastructure to handle that type of traffic. The other part of that money is going to be seen in every classroom in our district. And this would be a model classroom, not the way it looks, but the equipment that's in it. So please don't think this is the way all our classrooms will look. But this would be a model technology classroom. They would have a mounted projector like this one we have here. You have a wireless access point. So it makes every, every room in our buildings a wireless access point. If you walk in with a phone, you're only internet. iPad, you're only internet. We've got a laptop cart that will probably be shared by several teachers that could have 25 to 30 laptops on it. We've got about 10 mobile devices. This is your iPads, your Surface, your whatever, Google Pad, whatever is popular at that time. You have about five virtual desktops over here for kids to work on. And then the teacher obviously has a station. Also, we have an interactive device, a whiteboard. This is, this is kind of a souped-up chalkboard, but it also allows us to run computer data through there. It's a pretty neat device if you haven't seen that. So this is what we're saying would be in every classroom in our district. And I, as I tell people all the time, when the guy that reads our water meter has a laptop computer in his truck, technology is here to stay, I can promise you. So it is very important that we get these tools in our kids' hands. District-wide improvements. Honestly, this goes back to the tax swap that I was telling you about. This, we are wanting to pay for these things out of the INS side of our budget. These are high-dollar items that we have to purchase yearly. The first bus I bought as a superintendent, I think, cost $23,000. A bus today costs $100,000, every bus. And we need to buy between four and six every year to replace our fleet. We run our buses for 200,000 miles and 14 years. So we get our use out of our buses. The band equipment is catching up on replacing really expensive band instruments that last 15 to 30 years sometimes. So we're not talking about buying flutes and clarinets. We're talking about $12,000 concert sousaphones or, I don't even know what they'd be called. Bobos and clarinets and things like that. So we're talking about really expensive band instruments that we need. And then the last piece of this puzzle would be to repurpose Crossland, which is where our ninth graders are located. We would repurpose that as our new central office. So we would move our central office folks over to Crossland. And we see a lot of benefits from that. If you've been to our central office, it's more like a series of buildings. And they range from 1935 to probably 1969 or so. And there's about six different buildings that you sometimes have to navigate. So not only do we think we have some energy efficiencies by moving this all in one place, we know that there's some efficiencies for administrators to all be under one roof. And we think there's a lot of benefits for our public to have a one-stop shop to talk to anybody in our departments.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
What's the ninth grade repurposing that you're doing? Who's on the first floor of the new ninth grade building? I thought that's where you were putting the administration people.
No, Crossland is a separate building. Crossland is a separate campus.
Why not take all the administration people, move them over there?
Oh, that's the high school, no, that's the high school administration that sets a new, the new addition. So that's high school principals, assistant principals, counselors, diagnosticians, people like that. These are actually our central office folks like superintendent, assistant student, curriculum, transportation, those kind of guys. Yes, these are district, district-level people, yes, sir. And then we talked about the refunding the existing debt on our HVAC. We replaced about 12,000 light fixtures over the summer. We replaced about 200 HVAC units that were over 20 years old. We replaced, I think, about 4,000 water fixtures to get some energy efficiencies. And so this is just paying for this out of that INS side instead of the M and O side.
What is INS?
Interest and sinking. That's basically paying our mortgage. That's what we need to do.
And what's the other one?
M and O is maintenance and operations. That's our, that's our monthly cost.
That, that initial bond issue that was passed, did you still owe $82 million on it?
Yes, sir.
When was that process? When was that debt taken on?
99, I believe, was the last bond that passed here. And then, the thing, the thing that's confusing sometimes about bond issues is they can be refinanced, you know? If you originally bought the bond or sold the bonds at 5%, you know, there's ways to really benefit our district by refinancing sometimes and saving literally millions of dollars. So it's, it's not quite as simple as a home mortgage where you get a 30-year note and pay it off in 30 years and it's gone. It's not quite that simple, especially with the refinancing.
You're talking about doubling that.
Do what now?
You're talking about doubling that now.
Yes, and we can, and we can talk about that. And we'll, we'll get into the financial side of things, obviously. This is our project schedule. If we, if the bond passes, the first projects will be our safety and security upgrades at all of our campuses, other than the high school, obviously, because we'll be redoing that entire campus. We will do those upgrades next summer. So when our kids come back to school in August, from pre-k to eight, they will have the new security upgrades complete on their campuses. The high school is a multi-phase approach. It's about a two-and-a-half to three-year project, honestly. Because what we will do there is- Because what we will do there is we'll build a ninth-grade wing, we'll build a career and tech center rear, and then we'll move 10th through 12th graders into those new areas while we work on other parts of the building. So it's a phased approach. Ninth graders will not actually come to the high school until fall of 2016. So a sixth grader this year would be the first group of kids that would actually go to the ninth grade at the new high school. And then after everything else is done, repurposing of Crossland would happen in the fall of '16 and hopefully be ready to open in the spring of '17. So this is a month-to-year approach. Let's talk about tax rates real quick. This goes back seven years. Seven years ago, your school taxes were $1.67. If you went back 10 years, your school taxes were $1.70. Okay, so over the last seven years, your school taxes have gone from $1.67 down to $1.14 and a half since. If you compare us to other schools in our area, we are just above Glen Rose. Glen Rose, as you know, has a power plant, tremendous property wealth. They send back a whole lot more money than we do. But because of their tremendous wealth, they get to keep a lot more than we do, too. So we're at the very bottom as far as comparing us to other schools. $1.14 and a half, just looking around, there's Toler at $1.33, Lightband's $1.39 almost, Weatherford's $1.40, and then all the way up to Crowley is at $1.67. If this bond passes, we are estimating it will be about a 15-cent increase in tax rate, which would move us to $1.29, which moves us all the way to right there. So even if this bond passes, we will still remain one of the lowest tax school rates, school districts in the metroplex. And that's something that I think is important for our community to know. Historical taxes, as far as how does it hit you in the pocketbook? In an average valued home in Granbury, which currently is $113,006, $113,000. Seven years ago, you were paying about $1,900 a year. Right now, you're paying about $1,300 a year. If you're in a $400,000 home, you were paying almost $7,000, $6,700. You're now paying $4,600. The projected tax increase for this is 15 cents. For an average homeowner, that would raise your taxes $170 per year. If you're in a $400,000 home, it would raise them $600 per year. And then at a monthly level, you're talking about $14 a month and $50 a month if you live in a $400,000 home. Something that I find that a lot of our citizens don't know is that if you are over 65 and you have applied for the over-65 exemption, you would not see a tax increase if this bond passes. I think that's very important for our over-65 voters to know. You would not see an increase. The only exception to that is if you make improvements to your home, and then only the value of that improvement would you pay the extra taxes on. So that's something that I find as I go around, a lot of our citizens don't know. So whether the bond passes or not, you need to make sure you apply for that over-65 exemption if you haven't done so. This is what the ballot looks like. Proposition 1 is $81.9 million. Proposition 2 is $3 million. They stand on their own. One could pass, one could fail, they could both pass, they could both fail. Early voting obviously has begun. Election day is November 5. If you want to look at these pictures a little closer or get more information, I would urge you to go to granburyisdbond.org. We also have a tax calculator there where you can put in the value of your personal home. It will tell you exactly what to expect in tax rate. We have frequently asked questions there where most of your questions, I think, can be answered. But I would urge you to go to that website. And with that, I will be glad to open it up for questions. And I've got lots of people here that can help me answer. Yes, sir.
I just wondered if you're going to give any influence from state or federal funds to this project?
The only benefit for us as far as state or federal is the state funds that we get to keep in Granbury without sending back to Austin. So there's a 20% benefit to our school district in taxes that would stay home and not be sent to Austin. There would be no federal impact aid on this.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
What do you anticipate doing with the present administration area? You said that, you know how much you might get for it?
You know, we haven't gone down that road. The building that I'm in was built in 1935. I think it's even a historical building. We don't have any plans to do anything with that building other than maybe use it as a school museum or a community center or, you know, we don't have plans to demolish it or get rid of that. The Decker Gym is being used by Boys and Girls Club. They use it every day. We certainly would not plan to kick them out of that area. So, you know, I can't speak for the board, but I can tell you that my recommendation would be to keep those buildings. You know, the rest of that complex, I think, would be a great place for Weatherford College. It might be a great place for some business to come in and purchase it, but we haven't put a value on that. But those two buildings especially, I don't think the school would let go of those. Other questions?
How much did you say was left on the loan that you haven't paid off yet?
Let me go over this one. The law says we can only have a 50-cent INS rate. So that's the maximum that we can have, is 50 cents. We currently have 10 and a half cents, okay? So the maximum that we could have asked for on this bond would have been 39 and a half cents. 30 and a half plus 10 and a half is 50. So the maximum we could have asked for would be about $206 million. That's what the bond issue could have been for if we wanted to try to max it out. We currently have $42.6 million outstanding on our principal. And that will be completely paid off in 2029. And those rates are somewhere between 2 and 5% on those bonds. But what we are saying with this is, you know, the 10 and a half cents is there. We're asking for a 15-cent increase. So when those 2029 bonds are paid off, obviously, the 10 and a half cents or whatever that number is at that point would come off of the tax. So at some point, the tax would go down. The other great thing about the INS side is, or great for taxpayers is, there's no reason to have a higher tax than you need on the INS side because all you can use it for is to pay your debt off. So it doesn't benefit us to raise more money than we can spend on the INS side because it can't be used for anything else. So as values increase, that rate can drop and then vice versa. So, yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is, I looked on a website today for the Granbury ISD and I was, is your current, and I didn't know if it was an annual service fee. Are you paying around $4.8 million a year in interest?
For debt service? I believe that's correct, yes, sir.
So that's like almost $5 million a year just for the interest on the current debt? And that has nothing to do with this debt right here? So that sounds like a lot. Before I ask my second question, I just want to get a clarification of something you said. You used like an analogy, this is kind of like a mortgage on a house. And when you go buy a house, you know, you take out a mortgage. But when you buy a house, you actually need, if they're asking $200,000, you need that $200,000 at the time of signing. Do you need $84 million like this year? I know because typically bond issues, you're authorized, if this passes, you're authorized to borrow $84 more million. But do you actually, and you start issuing debt, maybe not all at once necessarily, but kind of periodically? So you don't really need all that at one time?
Yeah, this is about a three-year project. So there may be, and we've got financial advisors that will tell us what is most beneficial for us. There will likely be more than one sale, likely two to three sales of bonds. So you are correct, the whole 15 cents may not be impacted the first year.
Okay. And I just wanted to mention a study that just came out by the Friedman Foundation. And this is nationally speaking, this is in Granbury. And I wonder if you can maybe relate this to how it is here in Granbury. Between 1950 and 2009, there's been a 96% increase in students in school here in the United States. And total school personnel has actually gone up 386%. If you look at only teachers alone, it's gone up 252%. And so you might say, well, that's maybe good because you get more teachers for students. And I think a lot of people in here are all for having teachers and having a good ratio and everything. But it also showed there was a 702% increase in administration, including other staff. So in essence, there were seven times, the growth was seven times higher for non-teachers than it was students. And so I don't know how it relates to Granbury. And a more recent one, when they looked at numbers from 1992 to 2009, in here, I mean, in the States, there was a 17% increase in students, but a 46% increase in non-teacher staff. So having hearing those numbers, and if it's similar here in Granbury, when the board was discussing possibly, you know, what can we do to raise the money to do this building? It seemed like, and this happens in Washington, too, they always seem to want, okay, if we need money, we need to raise taxes. But no one ever talks, discusses the possibility about cutting spending. So was it even ever discussed in the school board, the possibility of cutting not teachers? Not teachers. But actually, some of that 700% increase in non-teacher staff, has that ever been discussed?
And I don't know the actual number to that. Mickey or Mark might know. But this district has cut over $5 million in yearly spending over the last three years before I arrived. So there has been quite a bit of cutting of that. I will tell you, I've seen some of those same surveys and talking about administrative costs. And the one glaring thing that I always see is they lump everybody who's not a teacher as an administrator. So that aide that's in the classroom with the student that has feeding tube and they can't speak and they're non-ambulatory and they require one-on-one help, they count that as an administrator. And we all know that that's not the case.
This one, administration and other staff, is what it is.
Yeah. And I will tell you that I would love to do a study on the amount of paperwork and the amount of mandates that we had back in the 50s and we have now that requires a ridiculous number of staff to do. I mean, I would be glad to go back. You give me the same mandates they had in 1950 and we can cut a lot of staff. I'd be glad to do that, trust me. Because it is a paperwork nightmare, a mandate nightmare from Austin to Washington.
Sorry, just one more quick question. Would you say most of those mandates were federal or state?
State.
State, okay.
In our case.
You know, just looking at your presentation, if you look around this room, the majority of us are older people.
Yes, sir.
And when we see these beautiful facilities that rival a lot of colleges that are out there and we look at the education levels of these kids that are coming out. Don't take this personal, I'm just generalizing now. You say to yourself, is throwing all this money at these schools and building these beautiful schools, is it helping the situation? I don't think it is. That's just my personal opinion.
Sure. And I know that is a common, that's a common belief from some people. I will tell you-
For most of us, we didn't even have air conditioning in our schools.
I agree. I didn't either, believe me. You know, the only way that I can, the only way I can explain that from two levels is, number one, we are teaching things today that weren't even thought about when most of us went to school. So I will, you know, I see the surveys all the time. Our kids are not smarter than they were back in the 50s. Guys, I'm here to tell you that we've got sixth and seventh graders doing work that we did in high school now. So we may not memorize all the presidents as well as you did in the 40s and 50s. And we may not have all the poems memorized, but we can get kids on a computer and ask them a question. And in 30 seconds, they can give us all the information that they want. So it's a different type of learning, but it's, there's been lots of studies done with business leaders and company owners. They don't want kids necessarily that are just your straight A, rote memory type kids. They want kids who can work together, who can be taught a trade, who can cooperate, who come to work on time. Those are the kind of people that our businesses want. The other angle I would say, when you talk about the beautiful buildings, is that, you know, believe it or not, we do have to compete. And we have to compete with the Alitos of the world and the Weatherfords of the world and the Glen Roses of the world. And so I tell people this all the time and pardon me if you live in Alito, okay? I will say this right off, pardon me if you live in Alito. But I say this all the time. Go spend 20 minutes and drive around Alito. And then you come spend 20 minutes and drive around Granbury and you tell me where you would rather live.
Granbury.
You tell me, there's no question. Now, you go drive around their schools and tell me whether you'd rather have your kids go to school if you didn't know either one of them. And it is very obvious that they have pumped a ton of money into their schools. And they have people moving to Alito specifically for their schools. So in order to compete, that's what we believe that we need to do. Lots of research will tell you the school is one of the number-one drivers of the economy that there is. So it's not just about pretty buildings. I think there's a method to that and a reason for that. And I can tell you, I'm extremely proud of what we're teaching our kids today as opposed to back in the 50s and 60s. We teach a lot more subjects. We teach a lot more skills. And, you know, again, if you get into a memorization contest, that generation will beat ours every day. But if you get into a different kind of contest, there's no comparison. Yes, sir.
First, I'll make a comment. They don't know how to make change without a calculator. So-
And they don't have to, unfortunately, a lot of times.
If you work at McDonald's, you kind of know how to make change. You have an enrollment of 6,500 now.
Yes, sir.
What was it five years ago and what are you intended to be five years from now?
If these renovations are done, the high school will have a capacity of about 2,500 students in high school, nine through 12. We currently have about 1,800, so we've got a lot of capacity. We're projecting out to 15 years, I believe, have a capacity of 2,200 students in high school. So this, and this is another thing that I want to be very clear about. This is not one in a series of bonds. So this is not something where we're coming to you and saying $85 million and then three years from now, we're going to come back and say, hey, we need another $60 million. We think this takes care of us for a very long time, okay? They haven't passed a bond here in 14 years. And I can tell you that I don't see one in our future if this passes. Because we do have a lot of capacity in our lower grades, and this would give us a lot of capacity at our high school.
So according to our handout, the last bond election was 2005.
And it failed.
Oh, it failed?
Yes. The last one that passed was in '99. 2004 bond failed. Yes, ma'am.
What is outstanding debt for the school district?
Outstanding debt is 42.6 in principal and 35.8 in interest. So $78 million is our outstanding.
And what is this total debt outstanding, $82 million?
I don't know, I didn't give them those numbers. I don't know where those numbers came from. They could have been last year after, before the latest debt payment was made. Maybe that's where they came from.
What was the, what was that bond, what did that buy?
That bond was for two middle schools.
Middle schools, renovations at all elementary campuses, including the-
additions at our elementary campuses and some gymnasiums.
You talked about that you have to compete. Then we read the paper where it says 40% of the students are in impoverished areas, families. Who are we competing for? Is that going up or down?
Well, I think it's going up all across the state of Texas. I mean, I think you're just competing with families that have other options. Instead of moving to Granbury, they moved to Alito or Weatherford.
Let me say something. Economic development, when companies are thinking about locating here and moving their employees here, that is the first thing they look at. Where are my kids going to school? So that's who you're competing with. We're competing with Cleburne. We're competing with all of these other towns around here to get, you know, people in industries to create jobs, to lower that tax rate, tax base. Or raise the valuation, lower the taxes. So that's who we're competing with.
So are we worried about how the schools look or what the education you get?
Obviously, the education is the most important. And most of the spaces that I showed you, the career and tech spaces, the fine art spaces, the updating of the science labs and classrooms, those are all directly, the technology that we've got in this plan, those all directly impact education. Yes, sir.
Wouldn't it be better? I'm a firm believer in long-range planning. And by long range, I'm talking like 12 years. Wouldn't it have been better to do this in phases rather than taking in one big chunk on one bond election and show the plan with the initial phase in a bond election and let us do this section at a time due to the status of the economy right now?
Yeah, and I mean, that's always an option. That was just not the option that our groups chose. They felt like our needs were great enough right now that, you know, by the time you do a $10 million bond and then you come back two years ago and do another $10 million bond, this $84 million worth of projects now costs you $170 million instead of $85. So I think there's a lot of benefits to doing it at one time, obviously. But that certainly was an option, it just wasn't the one that our group chose.
How do you, after the uncertainty of the future property values, decide whether we get our lake levels back?
You know, I'm not an economist, but I'm hearing that, you know, I don't even want to get into this too much. I'm hearing that our economy is doing pretty well here. I mean, I don't, I think home sales are up actually. I know that when we did our demographic study, the home sales in the city were up 48% from last year, I believe was the number. So I haven't seen anything lately about the economy. Obviously, when the lake is full, it's much better for our economy. No question, nobody questions that. But I think our city offers enough other things that the lake is not the only economic driver that we have.
But isn't there uncertainty about what the property values will be? And then your revenue you're going to generate is based on those property values? Are you going to be able to meet the payments on this one?
Right. Again, I don't have those numbers other than to tell you that-
That's the reason we want to get more business in there because they pay higher taxes and they will relieve the property, the residential people from taxes. And Jim is absolutely right. I'm at the Chamber of Commerce and every business and actually every person that's moving to Granbury or thinking about moving to Granbury, the first question they ask is, how are the schools? Do you have a college? You know, and we're on the right track with that. But, you know, the one thing Texas has going for it is we have more 18 to 21-year-olds than any other state in the union. That is our human resource. Because natural resources, as you know, are kind of slim. I mean, we had cattle, we had cotton, we've had oil and gas and that's kind of been revived. Our next big resource in this state is our 18 to 21-year-olds. And if we don't teach them, they're either going to be our most precious resource or they're going to be the biggest drag on our economy. And so, anyway.
We go to college 30 miles down the road.
I was part of, my company also looked at places to develop and whatever. And we did look at schools, but always education. The ones that had the prettiest schools sometimes bit the dust because of the education level. Always looked at education, we didn't look at the aesthetic.
I don't agree with that, that you have to compete with the schools as far as the beautification of the building. That's hogwash as far as I'm concerned. You need to compete education-wise, educating your kids. And until we get some more discipline back from schools, and I know that's a long, hard uphill battle. I feel sorry for you, but until we do that, I don't think the education level's going to improve much at all.
Well-
And believe me, a lot of these kids coming out are dumbed down. There's no question in my mind about it. We used to hire them, half of them can't even read.
I would debate with you about that.
Well, I feel like being that offline.
Yes, sir?
Speaking of education, and I think it's something important at this point. Talk about the quality of schools that we do have, the number of recognized schools, the Zephyr schools and how we rate the districts because I think some we'd be very proud of. And so we can have it all.
Yeah, and I think that's the goal, is you want your kids to have the best. And you want your kids to have the best education, number one. You want to have the best facilities, you want to have the best, the most opportunities to participate. And our kids do score very well as compared to the rest of the state. They score higher than most areas. So, you know, we are very proud of our kids. You know, unfortunately, the 1% or 2% of our kids who don't, who choose to make some bad decisions are the ones that get depressed. And the 98% of our kids who are going to college and they're making straight A's and they're participating in about 10 different activities and they're going out and doing community service on the weekends, we don't hear near much about them. Everybody wants to jump on that 1% or 2% that makes some poor choices. They forget about that 98% that's doing really great things. Yes, sir?
Something that may be of interest to the audience sitting on this commission. It became abundantly clear to me that there's a paradigm shift or a complete shift in the education focus, certainly since we were all in school. And the focus now, more and more, is towards career technical education. The realization that not everyone's going to college, not everyone should be in college, not everyone wants to go to college. But the community's responsibility to prepare those students, those children, for a productive citizenship still relies upon the education system along with other factors. The lion's share of this bond is going to be directed at what is not available today. And what is not available today is the career technical education. Students are turned away in droves from these classrooms. They're ineffective, they're inefficient by virtue of their size. Dropout rates can correlate to that, there's nothing for me to go to, I'm bored, I don't want to be there. So I think that that section of this bond certainly needs to be light shed upon it and know that by, we're addressing our audience's needs. We're going to hopefully be able to produce and keep in school more students to then compete in the workforce. That just really was abundantly clear to me.
We should have done a call that made to me, that's a good tactic there. The call that was made to me was, you might have voted for it because you don't pay your taxes, your taxes won't increase. Worst marketing ever, that'll turn somebody against things right away. So I mean, your marketing, you better look at your marketing of things. I agree with your education process up here. But this was a good tactic.
And for the record, that was not GIST marketing, by the way.
It came from-
It's the first thing on your website.
Dr. Larch, someone gave me this question for you.
Okay.
It says, if the city's breakdown for my property tax is 60% for Granbury Independent School District, 21% for the City of Granbury, 16 for Hood County, 2% for Rhodes, and 0.5% for the library. We hold our city and county officials accountable for their budgets, which are miniscule compared to Granbury Independent School District. Where does all that go?
Well, again, we've got 6,600 students and we have 900 employees. So, you know, 70%, actually, in Granbury, 82% of our budget goes to paying the salaries of our employees. So it is directly related to salaries.
What's your organization look like to spend that 64 million? What's your organization look like to spend and monitor that 64 million for all that structure?
I don't understand your question.
Which, or how do you, well, I've not, see, right there, you've told me something. You don't plan on something like that, like spending that kind of expenditure without having some thought, organization, how are you going to monitor it? How are you going to manage that?
How do you monitor it?
That money, so it's spent right.
Every cent of this money will be spent on buildings and infrastructure, just as I showed you. And, you know-
Where's your project manager for it?
At this phase, and the, well, the way this works is, before you do the bond, you have concepts and that's where we are right now. Architects don't like to work for free. And so until they have a bond that is passed, they don't, we don't have blueprints. And I can't tell you that it's going to cost $800 for a Dora right now. We will get to a point where I can tell you exactly, this space costs this much dollars. This place costs this much dollars. So we're not there yet because you know, architects, again, they don't draw buildings until you have money to pay them. So that comes after the bond passes. They have done what's called concepts using square footage and using their formulas to come up with these dollars figures that we're using. But after that happens, we will hire a project manager. There will be a construction manager. I use what's called a construction manager at risk. They will give us what's called a guaranteed maximum price. They will bid out all of these projects and they will come to us and say, we can do all of these projects for $83.6 million. And once we sign on the dotted line and the board approves it, that is all the money we will spend, is $83.6 million. So trust me, when you're dealing with the state government and you're spending taxpayer dollars, there are level upon level of checks and balances on how every cent of that money is spent. If this doesn't go to some checking account where we've spent it any way we want to. Yes, sir?
Sorry, just one other quick question. You mentioned there was a 5 million decrease in spending. Can you give, is that like an M and O? You've been talking about M and O. I know you put it in terms of the dollar four. How much is the current year's budget? What is that M and O? And then can you give me the year where it was 5 million more than that? Do you know, off the top of your head, about when that would be?
I don't think we've ever been over a dollar four since the-
No, no, I'm going to think, but you're talking about 5, I mean, a $5 million decrease. And so we can't really be talking in terms of a dollar four, we need to talk in absolute numbers. What is your current operating M and O for this fiscal year?
About 54 million.
Yeah, if you look at roughly 2010, 2009, you'll see that's when we were topped out around 64, 65 million annually.
So around 64 to 65 million back in 2009, 2010.
Yeah, roughly around that timeframe. We actually, through attrition, reduced staffing by almost 130 positions inside of 18 months.
And so now you're saying you're around 59, you're spending around 59 million?
54, I believe.
Yeah, it's now you're paying 54 million? Less even more than 5 million.
That's our current operating.
Right.
And then we spend about 9 million. The thing that doesn't make this real clean is because the state changes their formulas all the time. And, you know, like last year, we sent back $11 million to the state. This year, we only sent back 9 million, only 9 million. We could have used that 9 million, but, so that's how that's accounted for. But we have had a tremendous decrease in staffing over the last three years. Yes, sir?
Yeah, there seems to be a lot of people who are not really aware of what the school does here. And I would like to, I try to make the board meetings very frequently. And I'd like to invite everyone to go to a school board meeting to see what transpires because when you go, you never know, whenever we talk about the kids that do all these things. We've had the, what is the accounting team for the last three years in one state? Now you show me another school that has done anything that what this school district has done. That leads me back to the point, the point that they've done it with what's been in Granbury for 40 years, 42 years, with what we've got now with one renovation. Just think what could happen if we give these kids the tools to do what they would like to do. It's just amazing to me to see that what these kids do, and you're correct when you said the 1% is the one that gets all the news, when it's the other 99, the 98% that does all these, brings these awards home. And it still really does, uses your heart good to see these kids come down and be recognized in front of the school board. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of information that you can get if you will just go to the school board and watch and listen. It's just a, it's a good thing.
And I appreciate it, sir. We do have some amazing kids that have made this progress. Yes, ma'am?
I think I understood you to say you'd already chosen the architect for this?
Yes.
And did that go out for bids?
We did a request for proposals. We interviewed five different firms and then our school board interviewed the final two and they made the selection. Yes, ma'am? I've worked in schools for, I think this is my 27th year. I've been in several school districts, mainly in East Texas. It is really a pleasure to work in Granbury. You have a fantastic community. We love living here. Kids and the staff here are amazing and we are proud to call it our home. So thanks for what you guys do to help make Granbury a great place. Thank you.